I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Oak Ridge Board of Education. Would you please join me as we honor America? The colors are presented by the Navy Junior ROTC Unit from Oak Ridge High School.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in all, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Scare and go. Order and go. Cover guard, fall out.
Thank you, and you may be seated. Next is the approval of the agenda. Do I hear any additions or corrections to the agenda? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion for approval. Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Ms. Webb. Please cast your vote. Agenda is approved unanimously. Next, we move to special reports and presentations. First, some of the good news, the some of the good news that's taking place in the Oak Ridge schools. Ms. Webb, we'll start with you.
Okay, news from Jefferson and Robertsville Middle Schools. The Oak Ridge Schools and the Sister City Support Organization are starting a video pen pal club in conjunction with our sister city of Nakashi, Japan. We see this as a valuable way to keep this relationship strong as we await what will hopefully be our next in-person exchange in the summer of 2023. The club is sponsored by JMS's Mr. John Smith and RMS's Mr. Sean Safer.
Mr. Stevens.
I have Robertsville. Robertsville Middle School kicked off the Character Strong Capstone Time on Wednesday, August the 10th. Robertsville is excited about this time with the students and know they will be going to, that it is going to benefit the school from all the material.
Ms. McLean.
Okay, I have more good news from Robertsville. The Tennessee Holocaust Commission announced the recipients of the 2021 Belts Lippman Award for Excellence in Holocaust Education. The winners included Dr. Julie Kinder-McMillan of Robertsville Middle School. She will receive a $1,500 scholarship and can use these funds to develop a new curriculum, attend trainings, and purchase resources to help further engage students in the study of the Holocaust.
And again, that's some of the good news that's taking place in our schools. This would be a good point to, on behalf of the board, let me thank each school that's sending us your newsletters and staff and parent information. That is very helpful to us to find out what's really going on in your schools. And there's a lot of stuff going on in your schools, I will assure you that. But it is very beneficial, and we greatly appreciate you doing that. Next, under special reports, we're going to talk a little bit and have a presentation regarding updating the Oak Ridge Comprehensive Plan. Mr. Stevens, we're going to go to you first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Oak Ridge Comprehensive Land Use Plan is the next step. You know, about three years ago, there was a major effort across the city to do the blueprint for Oak Ridge. Simply put, where would you like your city to be and what would you like it to look like 20, 30-plus years from today? To give basic guidance to the city at large, but also to all the citizens within the city to express yourselves, and it was the task of the city staff to put that together along with the Municipal Planning Commission. Well, I have the pleasure of working and have been working on the planning commission for a number of years. And one of the wonderful parts about that was how, was asking the question two, three years ago, how can we better integrate the students and give them their feedback? Because whether we realize it or not, these are going to be the real beneficiaries of the comprehensive plan. Many of us may have moved on by then in various different ways, but there is nothing as dynamic and wonderful than allowing students to give you their honest opinions about what they think is working and what isn't. So with that as a lead-in, I'll turn it over to Natalie, and she will go from here.
Well, before we go there, actually, we're going to go to Dr. Borchers next.
Very good, very good. And yes, we're happy to have Ms. Natalie Schmidt here this evening, senior planner for the city of Oak Ridge. And not only because she's here this evening, but she's also a member of our, what we're calling, an enrollment committee. And on that committee, talking about, one, our increased enrollment and the growth that we're having in the district, talking about facilities and what may or may not have to happen due to that enrollment, and then having some conversations, ongoing conversations about capacity. And it turns out to a lot of other different topics that come up in that conversation. So we thank Ms. Schmidt for being a part of that committee and for being here tonight. So Natalie, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you so much. It's a pleasure to be here. Thanks for giving me some of your time. I also want to mention, I'm with the Planning and Development Department at the city of Oak Ridge. The director is Wayne Blasey. Yes, a lot of you may have worked with him as well in the past. This presentation that I'm showing you, we recently gave to the city council at their recent work session, but it is sort of a kickoff to a community engagement period to this update. And so allow me to give some background information about the project and then get into that part. So today, we'll go over what is a comprehensive plan and how the update process is going so far. So this is a general plan for the city, the local municipality. The task is to the planning commission to create this plan and to maintain it. So this is enabled through state law, and our current comprehensive plan was last updated in its entirety in 1988. This is not unusual throughout the state. There's no mandate that it be updated every five or 10 years like some other states, but this is definitely a good time to be doing it. And we have seen some change, and of course, we did go through that blueprint process. I'll also add that the diagram or the map that's shown on the screen there shows our land use plan, which doesn't even include the western portion of our city as it is today. So we definitely have some updating to do. So Mr. Stevens mentioned the city blueprint process from a few years back. That was an incredible process to gain feedback for a vision for the community. And we are not redoing this at this point. We're sort of incorporating it, but we are using it as a springboard for this update to the general plan. The main message at that time, which has not changed, is that the city needs to grow in order to sustain and continue to maintain city operations and functions. And so growing in many ways, but in generally, a very smart way, efficient way, where we don't want to increase our costs for operation or infrastructure, but we definitely want to improve our quality of life throughout. It also gave us certain values that were identified by the community. These have not changed as well. They're very strong, including education or public education, which enjoys community commitment, natural resources or assets, and also technology and science. Now to our current update process. The comprehensive plan has multiple layers, multiple systems, and the list on the left-hand side is just the way we've categorized it in six different elements. And this current update only involves the first one, land use and infrastructure. Now, it is actually the most broad. It probably touches everything else. They are very integrated, but just to say that we are only still dealing with a portion of the update that needs to be done. Whoops, sorry. I'm going back up. And the diagram on the right-hand side here shows generally what our update process is about right now. We've completed, or we're going through the first two bars on that diagram, study and analysis. That's been through work sessions with the planning commission, including some other agencies and experts that have come to speak with us. And we're in the process of setting some clear goals that we can bring to the community. But mainly, that orange box is where we're at now and why I'm here this evening, and would like to just make sure that you're aware of this and also to ask for your feedback and help with this process, because we certainly do want to include the schools, the parents, the faculty, everything that surrounds our school district. So briefly, I'm going to go through some of the study that we've done so far. We've looked at census data. We've looked at maps and infrastructure information that we have available to us. One of the more striking things is our population, which, as we know, if we know the history, was, you know, up to 75,000 people in 1945, but since 1950, has been very stagnant at about 29,000 until recently. The 2020 census did show an uptick, and from what we understand from permitting through development in the city currently, it is actually higher than that, and it's continuing to grow. And so what we did was we looked at current development projects, such as the Preserve, and assuming that they continue going strong even over 20 years, if they complete, then this is what the population will look like at that point. This is not a number that we're sticking with, but it's just something to sort of open our eyes and make us realize what we might be dealing with. And to show that the distribution of population spatially, we put those development projects on a map, and we assigned population based on the number of housing units, total housing units that they're projecting, and assigned the 2.39 people per family or, you know, persons per dwelling unit from the census to those numbers, and that's how we came up with this. It's not a perfect representation, but it's just an interesting way also of looking at distribution. In addition, we are aware of new jobs coming to town. We currently have more jobs in Oak Ridge, in the city limits, than we have people living here. And we are actually expecting more jobs. And so you would think that there should be more demand for housing, more demand for people living here, certainly expectations. If we can even meet the demand at a certain point, you know, we have a lot coming towards us to prepare for. Finally, I mentioned that we spoke with agency experts, departments in the city, to talk about what growth would mean to them, providing police service, for instance, fire service, et cetera. And so we have a lot of that information to guide us into the next steps. And here, I'll go in briefly, very, very briefly, touch upon the goals that we've put together just to give us direction for this plan. When we come up with the plan, the idea is that this will, it will show us how to strategize for growth, how to deal with the growth that we expect. The goals are giving us that direction, helping us to stay focused on how we want to present the plan, how we might want to go about meeting some of those challenges. And so we're building upon blueprint values as shown there. And we also came up with several goals here that are illustrated. Again, I'm not going to go through them, but basically touching upon housing, mobility, natural assets again, and also the uniqueness of our place. Okay, back to engaging our community. So at this point, with this information, which I've sort of flashed before you, we are going to come up with ways to reach out to different groups. We're hoping to have a few in-person meetings, but we can't manage a lot of that. We still want to reach a lot of people. So we're planning to do some online or meeting in a box kind of methods where we can make contact with a certain group that is willing to meet amongst themselves, maybe a church group or an HOA, and use that information themselves to think about the information, look at the goals, some other concepts, and give us feedback. Next, so, oh, I already touched on these. Good. So again, we're trying to reach a broad spectrum of the community, similar to blueprint, but we also need to be mindful of reaching any sort of parts of the community that are usually not engaged with what we're doing right now. And so we do definitely want your ideas. We've reached out to schools, maybe not individual schools at this point, but if there were some good ideas that you can think of already, we'd be happy, we would love to know about them and to be able to work with people who are already kind of thinking along this way, perhaps, or so it can fit into what they're already doing. Okay, so just briefly to the next steps, once we have feedback, we expect this to take six to eight weeks. Then we hope to start to draft that plan. This will be our plan for land use and infrastructure again, growth and change. It incorporates a lot of different ideas, but it's really just one part of our overall general plan. We'll also bring it back for public review, since we'll have contacts with people we've engaged with already, and bring it back to the planning commission for a recommendation to city council. Once it is approved, that will be done, ideally, yes, that will be done, and will already begin to serve as a guiding document to subsequent plans, studies, projects, CIP, that sort of thing. And that's all I have, except for my contact information.
Questions or comments from board members? Dr. Borchers, anything?
Just, I think it's really good timing as far as our committee's getting started and Natalie being willing to join and what the city's doing with their, all of this study. So I think it's great timing for us, and we can be a part of that process. So looking forward to more meetings.
Well, and it is good timing, and I think a lot of important aspects within the comprehensive plan, but important to us as a board of education is the fact that we can't wait when we're seeing growth as we're seeing, and some of our schools already getting close to being to the point where we're out of room. We need to be making decisions as we look forward now on what is available, what we can do, so we don't wait until it's too late to do something and have something planned. So that aspect is critical for future planning for us as we continue to hopefully see this growth in our community. And I like also, somewhere along the line, there are a group or groups of students, as Ben alluded to, that need to have some impact on this, because I think your statement is perfect. I mean, they're the ones that are going to be living here as this continues, and you think, hopefully, if they're making decisions about a place where they're going to live, they're more likely to live here or come back here to live after they've graduated from high school or whatever their next step is after that. So I think this is critical to develop the next step for us as an educational unit. Ben?
One last thing, and it speaks to the timing being excellent, is that the county planning commission is doing some of the same things. So the time and effort the city spends on their individual plan is rolled up also into Anderson County's comprehensive and land use plan, which we are also looking at who, what, when, where, and how. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time, and we'll look forward to some next steps. Okay, moving on, next is the public forum. Public forum is for anyone who would like to address a topic that is not on the agenda. You may address a topic that is on the agenda when it is presented, and if you would like to do so at that time, please raise your hand to be recognized. If you choose to address the board, you will have three minutes to speak. The board may or may not respond to your comments, or may have the superintendent address your concerns. When you speak, please come to the podium, sign in, and then state your name and address for the board. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board at this time? Seeing no one, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion? Second. Motion made by Ms. Agel, seconded by Mr. Stevens. Please cast your vote. The consent agenda is approved unanimously. Moving on to items for action. Item A, FY23 Board of Education Annual Agenda. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the FY23 Board of Education Annual Agenda.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Mr. Stevens. Dr. Borchers.
And the board has this attachment, and it's an effort for us to kind of catalog what we do every month, and it's kind of a work in progress. We went back, Lynn went back to last year's and filled in some of those months what we do regularly every year, and we're going to add things this year if we do some other things, and we've asked departments as well. But we think this is a good document to have as a board, and it also helps our executive committee.
Come answer questions. Hearing none, the motion is approval of the FY23 Board of Education Annual Agenda. Please cast your vote. Motion approves unanimously. Item B is the Oak Ridge Police Department MOU Live View Access to School Security Camera System. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the ORPD MOU Live View Access to School Security Camera System.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Stevens, seconded by Ms. McLean. Dr. Borchers.
As the board knows, we recently provided the Oak Ridge Police Department 24/7 access to our outside security cameras for all facilities. So at this point, we're now recommending that the camera access be expanded to include interior cameras only during training or some type of emergency situation. And the board should know that we will know or be notified at any time the ORPD accesses our cameras.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item C, Request to Submit RMS for the TSBA School of the Year for Excellence in Architectural Design in the Renovation Category. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the request from Cope and Associates to submit RMS for the TSBA School of the Year for Excellence in Architectural Design Award in the renovation category.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Agel, seconded by Ms. Webb.
Just as the memo shared, but just some additional information, Peter Ludman, who we've worked with quite a bit, will be the lead architect for the project and compile all the submission forms and pictures for this. And I think it's pretty exciting for Robertsville to be up for this award. It turned out really great.
Did that. Come answer questions. I've got a question. It really doesn't have anything to do that, but it does have something to do with it. We still have work to do, right? Particularly on the cafeteria end of the building right there.
Yeah, I believe we had the footings, as you say, going in for the dock. Mr. Thacker?
The contractor was framing the dock, loading dock, yesterday and today. Concrete's supposed to be poured tomorrow. They still have some walls to put up there that's going to be kind of a privacy fencing and relocate the dumpster in that area as well, so it'll all clean up and have a nice view of the Illinois Avenue side. Weather permitting, they expect to be done two to three weeks, and they're out.
And is that pretty much?
That's it.
Check off at the bottom?
That's the last thing.
Maybe some potential signage.
Yeah, but that'll be coming from us.
Okay, thanks. All right. You've heard the recommendation. Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. And I would anticipate that he, Peter, does have the dates when that is due by?
I believe so, yeah. He'll have all of that submitted, yep.
Okay, next, item D is the FY23 Preschool Child and Adult Care Food Program Grant. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the approval of the FY23 Preschool CA CFP Grant Application.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Stevens, seconded by Ms. McLean. Dr. Borchers.
We've had this grant in the past, but just as a reminder, it provides breakfast, lunch, and a snack each day for all preschool students. So there's not a set amount for this, but it's on a reimbursement basis only.
Come answer questions. Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item E, FY23 Family Resource Center Grant. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the FY23 Family Resource Grant.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Webb, seconded by Ms. Agel. Dr. Borchers.
I know we're all very proud of this program, and Joe is here with us tonight, but I'm going to read a few things from the memo that was presented for this item. Joe Bruce has been the Family Resource Director since the conception of the program, now in its 29th year of service. The mission of the Family Resource Center is to break down barriers to a child's educational success and eliminate problems that keep families from becoming fully functioning and independent members of our community. So just a few things, last year, this would be our longest agenda item, but I'm going to read a few of them. The center directly served 470 families affecting 1,066 children. Many families received multiple services. The Family Resource Center received $46,000 in monetary donations and approximately $284,000 in in-kind services to total around $330,000 last year. Last year, the FRC provided case management to 136 families and provided direct emergency assistance to 99 families by utilizing donations made to the FRC. And the final one I'll put out there is the FRC networked with over 175 professionals, medical and social service providers to meet the needs of children and families. A total of 1,752 referrals were made through the information and referral process to meet each family's individual needs. And that list continues to grow and grow, but just happy for what Joe Bruce has done for the district and through this great program.
And Ms. Bruce, I'm not going to ask you to come up and speak unless you would like to, but I know, we know, our schools know the value of this program and what it means to our students and our parents. And I know what you do comes from your heart to do this. So I'd like for you, just if you would, would you stand up? Just stand up. You don't have to talk. All I want you to do is stand up. I'd like you all to help me thank her for what she does in this program. Any other comments? Ms. McLean.
This is like two pages of good news. We should, you know, we could go over all of this. I mean, between the medical services that she provides, the Easter baskets, the Thanksgiving baskets, the Christmas angel tree stuff.
Backpacks.
The shoes, the backpack for food. I mean, we are so excited that we're able to provide all of these necessary things to our kids and their families, and it just makes me proud.
It's time-consuming, and for all those who work to do that, our appreciation is of the highest order. So this is the FY23 Fiscal Pre-Monitoring Supports Grant. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the FY23 Fiscal Pre-Monitoring Supports Grant. Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the FY-23 Fiscal Pre-Monitoring Supports Grant.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion?
Move. Second.
Well, let's see. Ms. McLean made the motion, Mr. Stevens seconded the motion.
Fair enough.
Dr. Borchers.
This grant and the next two are kind of carryover from FY-22 and now FY-23, so we're approving those again. But I just recommend approving this contract with Brewstein Menacevitz PLLC to provide technical assistance in the areas of grant compliance.
Per the superintendent's recommendation and motion, are there any questions? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item G, FY-23 TEN All Corps Grant. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the FY-23 Tennessee All Corps Grant from TDOE. These grant funds provide before and after-school academic tutoring for students in grades K through 8.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Y'all are going to have to jump in a little bit quicker to help me out here now. I think Ms. Webb made this motion, and Ms. Agel seconded it. How's that? Dr. Borchers.
Again, just a carryover from FY-22 and now approving this for FY-23.
Come answer questions. Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item H, FY-23 ESER 2.0 Grant. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the FY-23 ESER 2.0 Grant.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Ms. Agel. Now scared you all off. Dr. Borchers.
Again, just carryover again on this grant as well.
Come answer questions. Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item. Item I, FY-23 System Grant. How's that? Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the FY-23 System Grant.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Stevens, seconded by Ms. Webb. Dr. Borchers.
Excited about this grant, and we're going to have an innovative high school grant come up here in a couple of items. But this grant provides funding for work-based courses through a partnership between Oak Ridge Schools, Roan State, and local employers for ORHS. And if you look further down in that, we're working with Oak Ridge Tool and Engineering, Tennessee Tool, and Low Car. So this is our students with that I-School going out and working with these entities. So just a great, great experience for these students.
Come answer questions. Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item J, FY-23 Transition School to Work Grant. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the FY-23 Transition School to Work Grant.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Ms. Agel. Dr. Borchers.
This is just a fantastic grant. I'm going to read some of this just so our public can hear that, and Mr. Stoltz has done a great job with this program. But the grant covers two years and lasts until September of '24. The overall award is $296,000. This grant will allow us to continue and even expand upon our current transition to school work in the classroom and community by fully funding salary and benefits for two workplace-oriented specialists. In addition to funding all benefits for the first $50,000 salary annually to our Transition School to Work Coordinator. So just amazing grant, great work by our team, John Stoltz and his team, and just more great opportunities for students.
Come answer questions. Mr. Stevens.
This kind of speaks to why each year when we're going through the budget cycle, I go out of the way to ask, how much funding from grants do we use each year? And it's to ensure that the city and the public in general understands the work the staff has done in order to find the funds for these programs and so many others. So instead of just talking about what we don't have, they're attacking the problem and developing the necessary strategies to find the grants, to find the necessary funding, and to manage the grants, which is another science all by itself also, even after you get the grant. So I will continue to beat that drum along with everybody else on the board about how fortunate we are to have a staff in this school system that aggressively goes out to find the necessary funding to get the job done. Above and beyond what we or what many other school systems are doing, they're picking a path and saying, let's try it this way and see what, see how that works out. So thanks a whole heck of a lot, and we must always be each other's primary cheerleading team so that they understand we recognize the time, the effort, and the energy that's put into finding these grants, managing the grant, and doing all the things that are required within it. So for every person here that is wrapped into that process in any shape, form, or fashion, thanks a whole heck of a lot. We greatly appreciate it, and the students benefit a thousand times over. And I'll do this one little plug and quit. Nothing is as touching as to have an adult student, as happened to me, and I've told the story many times, that came to this school system from Memphis, had special needs. The school system demonstrated that we're looking for, okay, where are you? Here's what we can do. Here are the things that we'll put in place for you. And I talked to this gentleman 10 years plus out of the, having left the school system, and he was working now on getting his bachelor's through Tennessee Tech. And I had him as a student in the class that I was teaching. And the difference that we made in his life was tremendous. And that's just one story. There are many, many, many others. So thank you, everyone, that's the least bit involved in this process because it's paying dividends that we can't even begin to appreciate. Thank you.
Thank you. Would just add, a number of these grants that we're talking about deal with the theme of the Tennessee School Board Association Leadership Conference and Convention this year. The theme is "Education Makes Dreams Come True." And the things that we're doing here in Oak Ridge with these grants certainly is allowing the opportunity for all of our students to help realize those dreams. So it's good stuff. Any other comments? Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item K, FY-23 Innovative High Schools Model Grant. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the FY-23 Innovative High Schools Model Grant Budget for Programming at Oak Ridge High School.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Ms. Agel. Dr. Borchers.
As the board knows, this grant provides funding for the I-School course at Oak Ridge High School inclusive of staff salary, instructional materials, and professional development. Funds total approximately $470,000.
Come answer questions. Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item L, FY-23 Epidemiology and Laboratory Capacity Grant. That was the tongue tire I was trying to make sure I got through. I think I did okay. Dr. Borchers.
I recommend approval of the FY-23 ELC Grant.
So you took the easy way out. You've heard the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Ms. Webb. Dr. Borchers.
As the board knows, we used this for COVID-19 testing last year, and we're continuing that here at the SAB Building two days a week on Monday and Thursday from 7:30 to 3:45. And the other thing I'll pull out of the memo from Mr. Lay is that the remaining ELC grant funds will be utilized to maintain a 1.0 FTE nurse. This position will assure that there's no disruption of testing services, manage the central COVID-19 testing center here at SAB, and serve as a substitute nurse, and assist schools with student health procedures as needed.
Come answer questions. Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item M, Addition of a 1.0 FTE IHSM School Teacher Assistant at Oak Ridge High School. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the addition of a 1.0 FTE IHSM Teacher Assistant Position at ORHS.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. Webb, seconded by Ms. McLean. Dr. Borchers.
As it mentions there in the memo, this grant provides funding for the 1.0 FTE Teacher Assistant for the I-School program.
Come answer questions. Ms. Agel.
I plan to abstain from this vote as someone in my household has been asked to apply.
Any other comment or questions? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes for one abstention with conflict. Okay. Next item. Item N, in my opinion, this has kind of been a long time coming for Oak Ridge High School, and I'm glad to see it. Oak Ridge High School Bowling Team. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the ORHS Bowling Team.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Ms. Webb. Dr. Borchers.
ORHS is requesting that the board approve this bowling team and so they can participate in the TSSAA District III Bowling Season. The bowling team will be coached by Mrs. Julianne Fowler and have approximately 20 athletes consisting of 10 female and 10 male students. Bowling is a sanctioned TSSAA sport, which will provide us the opportunity to participate in multiple matches as well as postseason tournament opportunities. As you said, Mr. Phil Hour, this is a great thing for ORHS and our students.
Come answer questions. You know, I won't go way out on a line saying this, or I won't put anybody in a position they don't want to be in, but there are a lot of sports at the high school this board could not participate. Well, we probably could for a minute or two, and that'd be about it. They wouldn't call 911 after that. But, you know, this would be a good opportunity. If the bowling team needs a little competition, we could probably put together a board and staff bowling team to give them, I don't know how much competition we'd give, but do they still put those rubber things in the stuff? For us, they would do that. Yeah, okay, well, you know, I'll just throw that out to anybody that might be listening and wants to take us up on that. So, okay. Cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item O, Board Policy 1.806 Advertising and Distribution of Materials in the Schools. This is a first and second reading. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of Board Policy 1.806 Advertising and Distribution of Materials in the Schools.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Stevens, seconded by Ms. McLean. Dr. Borchers.
As the board can see there, they made one change there on the first page, line 25 and 26. Just making some clarification statements there.
Come answer questions. Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item P, Board Policy 4.403 Library Materials of First and Second Reading. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of Board Policy 4.403 Library Materials.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Mr. Stevens. Dr. Borchers.
Again, TSBA came out with one more suggestion, and we thought we would take their suggestion. It's on the back page there, just clarifying about the material and what they add there is appropriate for the age and maturity levels of the students who have access to the materials, and whether the material is suitable for and consistent with the educational mission of the school. So just some clarifying information from TSBA.
Comments from the board or questions? Ms. Agel.
Just a comment. This morning I saw a list of books that are now commonly banned, and at least four on that list were assigned reading when I was in high school. I hope this doesn't get out of hand.
Me too. While we're on this topic, I was reading, and I can't remember which school this was from, but it was from the newsletter. And I've seen different news reports on what some school districts are doing or not doing. What are we actually having to do to scan those materials into whatever we're scanning them into? One school district was asking for a volunteer or a parent or somebody to help do this scanning, which obviously, if staff is having to do it, is taking a considerable amount of time.
Dr. Williams.
Yes, we've purchased some additional software to collect all of these logs so that they can be easily updated over time and collected across all school buildings. We've also purchased some barcode scanners to help teachers speed this up and librarians speed this process up a little bit. Each school is coming up with their own process. We do have some educational assistants. We do have some volunteers. At the high school level, we have some student library aides that will assist in this process. So each building has their own unique process, but you are correct, it is a time-consuming process to scan all of the classroom libraries.
Thank you. There, and I wish I could remember their names. At the moment, I can't. There are two legislators, both in the House, that wrote an article that, I'm not sure exactly when they wrote it, but it was in the New Sentinel last week, and it dealt with their comments about getting teachers back, removing some of the unnecessary burdens on staff. This is certainly one of them right here to have to, if you're using staff to do that as opposed to the time that they need to teach and do what they're supposed to be doing and what they're hired to do. I know there's going to be a resolution coming to TSBA at our Delegate Assembly dealing with that topic. I don't know
I don't know what their specifics are, what they're looking at that are burdensome, burdened some things that teachers do, not to burden anyone, but if at some point in time, you could just make me a list of things you see that staff is having to do that take away from their teaching, educational time, that would be helpful to me and to the board as well. If this moves forward or gets any traction, I don't know, but at least two people in this house are thinking about it, so. Okay. Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item, Board Policy 6.201 Compulsory Attendance Ages. This is a first and second reading. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of Board Policy 6.201 Compulsory Attendance Ages.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Mr. Stevens. Dr. Borchers.
And as we've shared with the board, we added some clarifying language to the bottom of the first page of this policy, and we'll update our administrative procedures as well.
Comments or questions? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. From there, we'll move to Items for Information. One item there, and that would be Financial Reports. Are there any comments or questions regarding those reports? Ms. Van Dyke, anything you wish to add? Okay. Moving then to Items for Discussion. Any old business? New business? Some things to be aware of that hopefully are on your calendar. The 24th, which is this Wednesday, the board will be visiting the preschool. Looking forward to that, starting at 8:30 a.m., correct? On September the 7th, the board will be visiting Jefferson, also starting at 8:30 a.m. On September the 19th will be our next Board of Education meeting, starting at 5 p.m. On September the 27th, the board will be attending our Fall District Meeting at, in Jefferson County, I believe, at Jefferson County High School. And then on September the 28th, the board will be visiting Linden at 8:30 a.m. That's some of the things the board will be doing, a lot of things going on within our schools, both educationally, academically, and educationally athletically. So the board's always welcome to step in and see what's going on. Many of the good things are going on in our schools, so hopefully we can take advantage of that as well. Any additional comments from the board? Dr. Borchers. Thank you all for being here, taking your evening to be with us. Thanks to those who are watching. Dave and Travis, thank you back there for keeping us plugged in. Lynn, thank you for all you do for us as well. With that being said, we stand adjourned.